I call the Monday, March tenth, 2025 Board Meeting to order. We have seven Board Members with us this evening. And I remind our Board Members and viewing guests that we are conducting this meeting in person and streaming it from the LGI at Cedar Crest High School. The link to view the live stream meeting is located in the School Board Meetings page of the Cornwall-Lebanon School District website. At this time, I ask that everyone stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our guests this evening. It's nice to see you here. And I might add that it is very nice to have Dr. Demensis join us here this evening. So, welcome back. At this time, being that this is a public work session, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Demensic.
Thank you, Mrs. Schlegel. And once again, this is our public work session, our March Public Work Session of the Cornwall-Lebanon School District Board of School Directors. And so at this time, we will be presenting items to the Board of School Directors for consideration and discussion. At the close of that time, we will open it up to anyone in attendance if they have any questions that we can answer after that time. So, we're going to start tonight. Well, before I do start with the introductions here, I do want to say thank you to the Board for all of your support, your prayers, to our administration, to our staff, and to our community at large, too, during the time that I was out. Very humbling to know how many people were praying and thinking of you, and that is a good thing. It's a good thing. So, I really appreciate that, and certainly for my family as well. So, thank you very much. And it is very good to be back. It is very good to be back. So, very grateful to be here. So, thank you. Now, we are going to start with the presentation this evening, and then I'll go in and just make a few general comments after that about events happening, and we'll move into our regular part as we go into Buildings and Grounds and so on and so forth. But we'd like to start with our presentation. We do have from PFM Financial Advisors, Mr. Brad Remig, who is here. And then we also have from Raymond James, Mr. Lou Verdeli, who is here as well. And they're going to present to the Board for our Cedar Crest High School renovation project and stadium project, our financing plan for that, and sort of just to the next steps of where we are coming up here this month and into the next month. So, gentlemen, if you want to go, that microphone over there should work.
Good. Can you all hear me? Is it on? Okay, good. Good evening again. I'm Brad Remig with PFM. It's good to see everybody again. I think we have a PowerPoint up there. I don't know if it's on your computers as well, hopefully. We just wanted, as Dr. Demensic mentioned, talk about next steps for the next piece of financing for the high school and stadium projects. If we go to the next slide, this is a, it's an interest rate chart. Everybody knows financial advisors like colorful charts. So, this is the chart that kind of gives you an idea of what's going on in the market, in the municipal bond market, because that is where we'll be issuing the debt to secure the funds for the high school project. If you look at the bottom chart, you'll notice that over, since the, really, the beginning of the year, the line has been going down. That's not, that's not the Dow Jones, that's the interest rate chart. And going down is a good thing, okay? So, that means rates are getting more attractive as we get into the 2025 year. I'm going to defer to Mr. Verdeli in a minute or two. I know he'll have some comments on the market, but I'll get through this part first. If we go to the next slide, there are a couple of things I wanted to remind the Board. And the main thing really is, when you borrow funds for a project, to do so in a tax-exempt borrowing, you need to reasonably expect to spend it within three years. And as this project is going along, I think we're going to be just fine with that. The other thing that I wanted to mention, too, is what's different from the last two borrowings is these, this amount that we're going to be suggesting is going to be greater than what we've borrowed on the last two financings. And Wes and the administrative team and Gene have done a great job with maximizing during the time you've had these funds, interest earnings. So, we might not have to borrow as much money. There's still going to be a way to maximize those interest earnings. It's going to be in a different fashion, but we're still thinking about all that. We'll hope to have spent the money within 24 months and things of that nature. So, it's just slightly different. If we go to the next slide, one of the things you may remember is to issue debt as a school district in Pennsylvania, you need to comply with the LGUDA. What's that? It's the Local Government Unit Debt Act. And there are a lot of things that we need to follow. And the most important thing really for the Board is this, we've done it the last two years, is consider a parameters resolution and make sure that that resolution has everything in it to comply with all the state laws, and it gives us flexibility as to the timing of pricing and things of that nature. But it gives, the Board has to take action to allow for the borrowing, and that basic main thing is through this parameters resolution, which I'll talk about in just a minute more. If we go to the next slide, this, this is kind of a, on one page, kind of the plan that we've already done, as well as the plan going forward. All right? So, if you look at the color of the boxes there, in the black, basically going into the high school and stadium project, you had about $17 million worth of bonds. That was dated back to Union Canal Project, and it was also basically part of the connector building project. But as we move to the blue, the yellow, and the orange, that's really the high school and the stadium, how we're thinking about planning. The blue, we did last year, it last fall, got 15 million to get us started. And then we're looking at, in the yellow, this year, about 50 million, and then next year in 2026, another 50 million to fully fund everything at the high school and stadium project. So, that's the plan there. And first, and right now, we're focused on the yellow to make sure we get the funding started, as I know your, I think your bids are coming in soon. So, we'll see, we want to get, we want to be positioned and ready to go. The next slide gives you an idea of the timeline. For the blue, that's the timeline for this 2025 issuance. We're here March tenth to give you an update on the plan and kind of get things teed up. At your next meeting in a week, on March seventeenth, would be the parameters resolution consideration by the Board. If you remember from the past financings, typically those parameters resolutions are for amounts higher than what we think we're going to need to borrow, because we have to make sure we comply with it. When all the pricing gets done and the interest rates and the structuring, we need to make sure to get your 50 million, we have enough room within the resolution to get to where we want to get to. So, that number is going to probably be in the 57 and a half to $60 million range. So, on next week, when you're seeing the parameters resolution, say, hmm, Brad and Lou are here talking about 50 million, why does it say 60 or 57 or something like that? That's the reason for, the reason that we do that for the resolution. Once the debt is issued, and we don't need to use all that, we can take it off the books and with, at the state. In the green, so then we'd lock in the rates probably mid-April and close just before Memorial Day. That's kind of the timeline. Next year, I would expect a similar timeframe, where we would be back here, you'd be a year under the project going, see how things are going, see if 50 million's the right number for the, the orange column. Do we need 50? Do we need 45? Do we need, whatever it is that we, we can fine tune, that borrowing amount? And I would expect a similar timeframe to next year. I think that would be it. Yep. So, from there, I just didn't, Lou, I don't know if you want to just mention one or two things on what's going on?
Sure. Good evening. Just a quick update on, really talking off of Brad's interest rate chart. He pointed out how rates really, since the beginning of this year, have been on a downward trend. It's really been driven by lots of uncertainty, obviously the talk of tariffs, what it's going to do to the economy. So, we've seen what market people say is kind of a risk-off environment. So, people are selling stocks, and they're going into something safe like bonds. So, that's been good. Interest rates are coming down because there's so much demand, and there's not enough supply of issues like what you're doing come, coming to market. As an example, we priced another issue here in Pennsylvania just two weeks ago. It's about a $40 million issue, and at the end of an hour and a half order period, we had $100 million of orders. So, that's what we're seeing, is there's just more demand for the types of debt that you issue because it's considered safe, then, and that demand is exceeding the supply that's coming to market, and that's helping to drive those interest rates lower. So, as we were just talking with Gene and Wes before the meeting, the timing, while things sound like doomsday and the stock markets were down big today, that pushes interest rates lower. So, it's actually a good thing for you as we're preparing to lock in interest rates on this next financing. So, timing right now looks pretty good. I know Brad's schedule has us targeting about the middle part of April to lock in interest rate. So, we still do have interest rate risk from now until we actually go into the market that day. But obviously, we stay in touch with the administration, and hopefully we'll have good news here in about a month.
Okay. If there's any questions, let me, feel free to ask, but that's kind of where we are.
Okay. Do we have any questions from anyone on the Board?
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So, we will have that on then, that parameters resolution will be on for next Monday. We are going to begin then into Buildings and Grounds here, and just a couple of updates and comments before we get into that. We did have some recent events. Obviously, we just concluded our high school spring musical. Very nicely done. We also had our Future Educator Open House that was just held. We also had our Title III ESL Family Engagement Night, which was well-attended last Thursday. So, thank you to Dr. Bosman, Dr. Backley for that. And then last Friday, we also had one of our gold card events, which are Spring Dinner and Dance with 200 guests. And thank you to the High School Key Club and their advisor, Shannon Reich, for all of their efforts. Thank you to Amy Wissinger and all the people that were involved in planning that. Amy's a big part of that, so, so thank you. That's a, that's a great event to have so many of our residents come out and have that opportunity to interact with our students here at the high school. We do have Looking Ahead this week. We do have our high school, middle school jazz band concert this Wednesday, the March twelfth, here in the high school auditorium. And just a reminder, too, that schools are in session this Friday. This is our second. We had two makeup days this year, so this is a weather makeup day for school closure on February sixth. We also had our student artwork on display, and that will be on display throughout the month of March at the Lebanon Council on the Arts. So, just to know that that's out there, too. We have Falcon Foundation Grants and Awards, that's coming up in April fifteenth. That's the deadline for staff, for enrichment opportunities for students, as well as any staff applications. And of course, we are beginning our spring sports season as well. The other part, I guess I should mention, because we do have full-day kindergarten that we're planning for next year, is that we are very much into the process of enrolling children for kindergarten. So, we encourage parents and families to please come out and let us know if your child's starting kindergarten. There is a homepage there on the website for the online enrollment process, and then parents receive an email, and they schedule a date for an in-person registration, as well as the, have the dates for orientation. So, those are some of the meetings. Our next meeting, of course, as we mentioned, is next Monday, the seventeenth. And some of the topics that we will be discussing this night as we move into Buildings and Grounds, we will have a report from our supervisor, Mr. Brickley, who is going to give our Buildings and Grounds report. We'll also have some updates about the Falcon Connector. We will talk in more detail about the financing process. That'll build upon what was presented here, sort of the long-term beyond that. Mrs. Hensel will build on that. And we'll also have some general comments about the budget proposal. So, thank you. We will start then with Buildings and Grounds. And Mr. Brickley, you have a number of things to, to review here.
Hi. Thanks for having me. It's our semi-annual update. I sent out a report earlier in the, I guess later last week, everyone got. This, tonight, we're going to do something a little different. We're going to take a kind of a tour through the district through pictures. So, if you haven't been around the district, we'll talk about projects currently going on, things we have completed recently, and what we have to look forward to this summer. Starting here is where we started a few months ago, just clearing the ground and the buildings up, the connector. Progress is going well despite our little setback at the beginning of the project. We have our furniture ordered. Jason, can you go to the next slide, please? Furniture is ordered and will be coming end of July. Rooms are painted, ceiling tile grids are going up for the drop ceiling. That's the tile on the right in the bathrooms. So, bathroom tile is complete, floor will be next, and then the fixtures will go in. Elevators are being installed. The elevator company is here, the elevator, not elevators. Next, next slide, Jason, please. Painting is being done, it's on the bulkheads. So, it's, it's moving along. There's a lot, a lot of guys up there working, they're working weekends to get back on schedule, which they're not too far behind. The masons are almost done with the, the outside of the building. So, we're, we're happy with the progress, and, and things are moving along very well. Next, we're going to go to the high school planning and tours. So, as you know, the high school and the stadium project are out the bid. So, for the past four weeks, we've been meeting with contractors touring the high school, touring the stadium from all trades. I can't tell you how, how much work has gone into this between architects, engineers, high school administration, Dr. Murray, Dr. Demensic, over the summer, meeting with department heads, making sure that we have every I dotted and T crossed, and I'm sure we're going to miss something, but huge project. We're excited. Tomorrow, bids are opening for the stadium, and then next week, we open the bids for the high school. So, we'll have more discussion at that time. We're, we're looking forward to getting this project started. As part of that project, we, we did kind of get antsy and get started right away. The main sanitary line, which runs from the auditorium down to our new pump stations in front of the middle school, last fall, we had an issue with tree roots invading into this line, and we found out that it is the clay terracotta pipe installed in the, the early sixties. So, through this project, we've been investigating and working with a bunch of plumbers on pipelining. So, we took advantage of this opportunity. We got bids. We talked to several companies replacing this line. We're lining the line. We decided to line it. Next slide, please. So, that is the before, that is the after. So, new pipe is PVC liner inside it. It was cured with steam, with hot air. So, we're, we're very happy with it, very happy with the cost as well. About $100,000 difference from excavating and, and replacing the pipe, and we have, we have basically a brand-new main sanitary line. So, that was exciting, all done within two days. So, that was exciting as well to see that process happen. But that clears up the front of the building. So, the outside front of the building is now done. We don't have to trench. We don't have to do anything out there this summer besides some site lighting, but that was, that was nice to get done over the break. So, over at the middle school, this is still kind of connected to the connector building. These are the new boilers and the pumps that are connected to those boilers. They are in, they, they provide heat for the middle school and also for the connector building. So, we're looking, looking to see basically the same thing happening in the high school this summer. That went well. They have been commissioned and signed over to us. As I mentioned, this is the new pump station. The yellow box is a generator. Thank God that we have a generator now for our sewer pumps, so if we lose power, we're still, we're still okay. We're still, we're still pumping away. It also has a, a alarm on it that sends texts and emails to, to our building manager if something gets clogged or if the pumps aren't working properly and the pit fills up. But that is also a completed project besides a little landscaping and some, some grass growing there. So, next, let's go over to Cornwall. So, this summer, we have planned, after the kids are out of school, a, a tree trimming along the Schnitz Creek. We're deeming this a safety trimming. You can see on the right-hand picture, there's a lot of dead trees and branches overhanging the walking path, and it also extends over to, over top of the playing field where the kids do gym class in recess. So, we have long tree trimming coming in to do some, some nipping and tucking there of those branches, get the dead wood out and lift the branches and get them back over, over top of the, the walking path. Let's go, come back here to main campus here. As I, I mentioned earlier, I think in November, I informed the Board that we were going to do a baseball field renovation. It's funded by our Booster Club. And this is the reason why, once you take the sod off, you can really see the, the buildup of the sand on that infield and outfield. And there's, there's our greeter tonight standing out there with one knee bent on the infield and the other, other knee in, in the grass area, or what was grass area. And the reason for the, again, the reason for the, the renovation was safety. The ball would hit that lip, and no one knew which way the ball was, was going to bounce, and some kids were getting some, some errant bounces. So, they felt the need to do that immediately, which, which I'm glad they did. And the baseball field is, is now being played on. They started on Monday, so it's, it was a great project. Union Canal, I put these slides in here. I heard some, some questions about what, what are we doing here with this gym floor? And this is basically the reason. Gym floor is original to the building. It's starting to split in some locations. We had several floor companies in, taking their recommendation, not, not allowing the, the subsurface to become unattached to the concrete or, or the glue to break down. If that happens, they cannot repair it. We're going over top of this floor with four different layers of the same material, repainting it, restriping it. And again, that, that a huge, huge savings as opposed to, to replacing the gym floor. So, we have at least a dozen of these slices and cracks. You can also see where it's chipping and some fading that's occurring throughout the, the gym floor. So, this will be occurring over the summer months. We're working with the company right now to schedule that, so there's no inconvenience to school. A couple of projects that have been approved. Again, this is Ebenezer, the hot water heater. This is domestic hot water. Some questions came up about this. The, the tank is original. That's a 600-gallon tank on the verge of springing some leaks. And the boiler that you see there, that, that boiler was replaced once and rebuilt twice. So, that project, we're going to three separate tanks, the gas burner on, on the front of each of them, so we have some redundancy. That project will take place again once school's out over the summertime, about two-week project. And then lastly, did you know this is the chiller that's installed over at Ebenezer? We went from an indoor centrifugal chiller, which was the latest and greatest when it was installed in 96, and a coin tower to an outdoor air-cooled chiller, the centrifugal chiller. And Dr. Bosman knows, when he was there, when that, when that turns on, the whole building knew it, because it rattled the entire building. So, we chose with a lot of more engineering, going to the air-cooled outdoor chiller on top of the gym roof. That project is nearing completion. They're going to do a couple more items tomorrow, and then Thursday, they'll switch the, the breakers over for the chiller, and then they'll start testing it by Friday or early next week. So, that's the outside, that's the inside. Those are all, all the pumps that, that push the cold and hot water throughout the building. Insulated, except for the elbows, where they want to test to make sure there's no leaks once we turn it on. But that project went very, very well. More engineering was a big part of that. They did a nice design, and they were on-site and followed the project through with the contractors. So, I believe that is all I have. There's no questions.
So, these are all, a lot of these are things that happen in addition to projects here on campus, right?
That's correct. Yeah, we got to keep the other buildings running, so we're working our way around and trying to replace the major components that are out, outside of their expected life expectancy. So, this is, this is an item that was original to the building in 96. Makes it almost 30 years old. So, it was time. Turned out very, very good, so. And as, if we stagger these, as we're doing now, we won't have it all hit us at once in the future, all right? So, we can, we can chip away at it 30 years from now when the next guy's here. So, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brickley. Okay, thank you. All right. So, I think we're, we're on now to the, that was the semi-annual reports. We're next on to the Falcon Connector change order, and this is an item that would be on for next week. Mrs. Hensel.
Yes, just a couple of what they call pending change orders put together to create change order number seven. They're small, minor amounts. One, as you saw, is a credit, but very small amounts as we're working through the, the project for a total of $14,255. So, that'll be on for approval next week.
Okay. Questions about any of that?
Okay. The next item is the, just an update on the renovations for the high school and stadium as mentioned before. The bid documents released for both projects, January 30th, so that's when they went out, both of them, the stadium and the high school. Bid opening dates are scheduled for 3:00 PM for the stadium tomorrow, March the 11th, and then for the high school is the 18th. Again, they're both 3:00 PM here in the LGI. As Mr. Brickley mentioned, we did do tours. He did many tours with different contractors, subcontractors, just to try to understand the scope of work. And it is important to do those tours, so they are bidding on more accurate scope of work. We are going to have a special board meeting once we open, get these bids opened, and we need to have your approval. So, right now, we are planning on March the 24th at 5:30 for a special meeting. That is scheduled right now. That's the plan. And then notice to proceed for both projects would be early April. I believe the stadium's going to be starting after school lets out. High school, obviously, will be bringing in materials once we do provide those award contracts.
So, just looking at that meeting on the 24th, sole purpose of that meeting is to award contracts. We are not planning any other business for that meeting. So, it'd be a pretty short one. So, if you come at 6:00, you'd probably miss it.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's the plan, right? So.
The, excuse me, the next item is capital reserve fund projects. I like to review the projects that are running through the capital reserve fund, and then next month, I'll, I'll bring to you the projects that are in the general fund budget. So, for the capital reserve fund, these are the projects. I kind of broke it out a little bit, so hopefully you can follow along better. We've had some things that are happening, some things are completed, some things are happening this summer, and then there is a project that's going to happen this coming winter. So, things that are currently happening, Ebenezer Elementary School chiller replacement, that is in its final stages. We do have a change order, though, that we are asking for you to approve next week, and that is for a platform to be able to access the controls on the piece of equipment. That is for $7,269. And again, we'll ask for your approval next week on that change order. And that is for the chiller replacement at Ebenezer. If you can go back one, Jason, sorry. Cedar Crest High School, as Mr. Brickley mentioned, we did do the lining of sanitary sewer lines. We did get that ratified in January because we had to get them on the schedule. That's why we had to move ahead quickly on that. And as he mentioned, it is completed, and you got to see pictures. So, the only thing on this slide would be a change order approval through Fry Lutz, who's doing our chiller at Ebenezer. Next slide. So, for this summer, we have Cornwall Elementary. We do have a roofing project that we are going through CoStar's pricing. We are asking for you to approve Gable and Son for that project, and the project will be $453,000. And that will complete Cornwall when it comes to roofing. It will completely be done. Ebenezer Elementary, we do have the water heater replacement. We got that approved by you in January, and they are hoping to start as soon as the equipment is received, which will be this summer. is received, which will be this summer. So again, the only thing on this slide would be Gable and Sun being approved for this summer's roofing project, and it's just going to be Cornwall this summer. Also, in the summer, South Lebanon Elementary School, we are to our final phase. We had three phases of the pods over there at South Lebanon, and this is our final flooring project for South Lebanon, and that does need approved next week. And Mr. Brickley did go out and get quotes, and notes flooring was the lowest quote, so we're going to ask for your approval next week for that. Union Canal Elementary School, gym floor surface, as Mr. Brickley mentioned, that was approved in February, and that will happen this coming summer. They need to get on the schedule for that. And then finally, the last capital reserve fund project will happen next winter due to lead times with the piece of equipment. The chiller replacement will be done this coming winter, so December, January. That was approved last month by you. So just a kind of review, I like to do this in November, and then now, where we are with the capital reserve fund, it is separate from the general fund. The net balance, in the beginning of March, we had $3.8 million. And then those projects that we talked about, and the ones that were approved, are in the queue yet. It's about $1 million, so that would provide us with, after the approvals next week, with $2.8, $2.9 million in that account. And then the proposed capital projects for this summer, which would be the roofing. And then we also have the general fund, which I usually include an allocation in the general fund to replenish what we're using. That would give us $3.3 million by this coming fall. I believe that's it for that line item? Any questions on that? I know there's a lot of information there.
I'm just looking at the proposal for the Cornwall roofing. Typically, flat roofs are a pain. So I noticed, and I wanted to ask about this, the one place you're getting half-inch tapered crickets to direct water, and in the other spot, you're getting a half-inch every foot for drain sumps. Is that a new thing on those roofs?
He's basically just going over top of what's already there.
Okay. And this will just aid with keeping the water moving and not having problems. All righty, thank you.
Any other questions on those, any of those items?
There's just a lot of projects that are happening. Some have already been approved, some need to be approved. Okay. There's a lot there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And the next item is our annual request to provide summer maintenance crew. It is including a staff of six. This is a mirror image of last year with just a slight increase. So this will be set for assistance this summer. So we'll ask for your approval on that. And then also, this is a renewal that we're requesting to have approved. Our current agreement with Ainsworth is expiring in June for our chiller preventative maintenance. The maintenance includes maintenance inspections four times a year. It is for a one-year renewal, and then it covers preventative maintenance for five of the six schools. As I mentioned earlier, Ebenezer is getting a chiller right now, so we don't need to have the preventative maintenance, not yet, on that one. And the total for that is $22,408. And we'll ask for your approval next week on that.
Okay. That concludes our buildings and grounds items. Do we have any questions or discussion about any of those items?
I will say very quickly, thank you to Mr. Brickley and the staff. When I look at the hourly rates that are posted for some of the outside contract, I realize we need them to do that work. But our staff does so much in-house, and saves, and does excellent work. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Steve Martin. Okay. Move next on to community relations, curriculum, and staff development. And the first item that we have on here, I believe, Dr. Bosman, you have this item.
Yes, good evening. So this first item is for the community schools of Pennsylvania. You know, just about three years ago, we embarked on this journey with them for our first two schools at Union Canal Elementary School in Ebenezer. So we are nearing the end of that current three-year agreement, so we're excited to continue that partnership with them, but also adding the continuation of the partial funding between the school district, and also through the help of United Way of Lebanon County in supporting CISP. We're going to be embarking on continuing that for another three years with community schools in Pennsylvania, so we're excited about that.
So we would have a ratification of this agreement? Or approval of this agreement?
Yeah, we would have approval next week.
That would be on next week's agenda. It's the same agreement. We actually, it was originally a three-year, and we approached it, we were going to receive the funding for the next three years for the 50%, so we're very glad to see that. And this is Dr. Rackley's item.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here tonight. I just wanted to share with you about our English Language Development Summer Camp. This is a camp we've run for a number of years now, but I just wanted to share with you our summer '25 proposal. So like we always do, we work three dates in, three weeks in the middle of July. This year, we're going to propose a Monday-through-Thursday camp, but we've extended our day to meet the same number of hours for our students. It'll just be over four days instead of five days. We'll still be at Union Canal Elementary School, and we're still hoping to serve somewhere in the neighborhood of 50-ish students who would qualify as an English learner in completed grades K through 11, so really looking at first, incoming first grade to 12th graders next year. We'll have five teachers, and they will work a five-hour day, plus a secretary, and are dedicated to meeting the needs of the students and staff at the camp. We'll provide transportation like we have in the past. We use two buses, and we actually run the entire district with two buses to provide that service for our families. And then through Ms. Rodriguez, we've already worked out free lunch and free breakfast, and we'll coordinate the portion of that program then through Emily. And then, as always, we try and find some fun activities, and so we're continuing with our two field trips next school year, so we'll plan our regular trip to the Lebanon Area Fair, as well as the high school planetarium, barring that we can make all the logistics work out there. Our estimated cost is $30,000, and that all comes out of the Title III accounts.
And this is an item, too, that will be on for approval?
Correct.
For next week.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do the teachers refer the students, or do we open it, and then they opt in for it?
All of our English learners in the district are invited, and then they have the opportunity to opt in.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Rackley. Next item we have is the classified employee tuition reimbursement. Dr. Bosman?
Okay, so back in, actually, October, we came forward with this proposal to, like a pilot program of a classified employee tuition reimbursement program offering for our staff. Excited about this, for, you know, our classified staff to have an opportunity to pursue a career in teaching, so we're planning to continue this next year. It would continue along the same lines, a maximum of up to 12 credits or four courses, an education focused on earning your teacher certification. Just some updates, we have four staff who've currently submitted for course approval. One of those folks is very close to finishing up. I believe after this school year, she'll only have one course left, and then her student teaching. Others are just slowly chipping away at it. I've spoken probably with four or five other staff who are also exploring this as a possibility. So just very excited about the opportunity to sort of invest in our own folks, develop sort of like our own internal pipeline of potential teachers for, you know, the next generation, as we look to try to continue to fill our openings.
Just a quick question. Could you remind us how long then will the, these people could be required to stay here within our district after they get their certification?
So once they are, it's one year after the last, you know, course that they've been reimbursed for. So two semesters. If at the time that they are finished their program, you know, they can return back, they can either be fortunate enough to secure a teaching position, or if they remain in their current role, you know, maybe it's a PCA, or they're a building assistant, they can remain in that position as well, and then maybe a position would open up later, so...
Yeah.
But one year is the minimum to stay.
So, I mean, this is all good. I'm really glad we're doing this. But the commitment, if there would be no professional career or jobs available, they would maybe need to stay in their present position, or they would have to...
Reimburse.
Get reimbursed, correct? Or they would have to reimburse us? So that is a little bit...
Yeah, they would have...
They would have to reimburse the school district, correct?
Correct. Back for whatever was taken with, if they stayed a semester and then left, they would then owe back, you know, whatever was taken during a semester. If they left immediately after, then they would owe back for one year back of reimbursement back to the district. But, once again, it's one of the things I've been most excited about, is to be able to offer this to our staff.
Yeah.
And ideally, we would have an opportunity.
Yeah.
Even if it's a short-term, long-term sub, and sometimes those go together and pair those up before there's a permanent available.
That's, that would be my hope, that they would be able to stay within our school district, and there wouldn't be limitations, that there wouldn't be availability, so... But you just don't know that. But it's still great to have that opportunity, if it exists, so it's great.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the folks who are participating. I believe three of the four are building assist, or, I'm sorry, are building substitutes, and then one is in another classified position.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. We will not have a motion on that for next week.
I have one more question. Is there a minimum requirement of education for them to participate in here? What I'm saying is, can they go all four years of college to get a teaching certificate? Are we looking for somebody that has so many credits before we're doing this, or anything like that, or...
We did not have a minimum, although I would say probably our target audience would have been folks who already have a bachelor's degree, only because to complete the typical 120 credits, that's usually part of a bachelor's, is going to take quite a number of years.
You know that part, too.
And I think, actually, the one, the one staff member who's not one of our building substitutes, I think is in that position, where she might have some college credit, but she doesn't have a degree, so she's got a little bit of a longer journey, but she's along that journey.
Okay, just asking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Are any of the other districts doing something like this that we know of?
I think there, I believe the IU has a program like this for their classified employees. And there may be another district in Lancaster County, one of the larger districts that does something similar, but those are the only ones that I'm aware of. And I know with certainty that the IU does offer this.
So I ask that because my thought is, is like, for instance, if we have secondary positions, but then we have a bunch of people going for elementary, could we maybe partner with other schools that do have, because maybe we don't have the position, but maybe they do, and then they're, so we can kind of, you know, get what we need, and so that we're trying to keep it in-house, especially if we're doing a couple of years of education, to try to work together as a team, because we might not need that type of position, but Lancaster might need it.
Yeah, so I think if there are other districts that are offering something similar to this, I think we could look at that if we're in some situations where there's some partnerships that, you know, if we, suppose we hire one of yours, and you hire one of ours, you know, do we work out some type of arrangement there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we would probably do that.
Okay.
But right now, I do not think it's the majority of districts. I think the IU has done this for a while, but I do not think the majority of districts are doing this.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we are one of the few, and this will not be a shocker, but when you go to the HR meetings, not everyone wants to lay their cards on the tables as to what everyone's offering, so, you know...
Yeah.
But no, I think we are, I think we're one of the few. And once again, it's something that excited me back in October about this, and now that I've seen it at this point, where staff members are actually working through it, it's even more exciting to see it actually sort of come to fruition.
We're seeing more districts asking questions about this at LBC.
Pardon?
So they're, so it is picking up. They may not want to put their cards all on the table, but it's a thing. It's a thing.
It's going to start to come more and more, probably. Well, it's a good way, you know, offering something to a group of employees to retain them, and incentive for them to stay with you, and then offering them a pathway. It does seem to make a lot of sense, so... Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Bosman. Thank you, Dr. Rackley. I believe that's all the items we have in community relations, curriculum, and staff development. Do we have any other questions about any of those items? Okay. We'll go on next to extracurricular.
Okay, I have this first one here, clubs and activities. So back in October or November, sometime in the fall, I had given, provided an update about our clubs and activities offerings, so just wanted to follow up now that we are, you know, further into the school year. So we have total about 66 clubs and activities approved. This impacts, you know, anywhere from 700 to 1,000 kids who could be participating in these clubs and activities over the school year. And that's all dependent on the activity and the group size that might best work for that activity. We have, you know, slightly more in the secondary, but the elementary and secondary are both well-represented. We have, it's funny how the numbers worked out the same, but it was, 28 of them are completed so far, 38 that are still in progress and working through that. And then we're also very excited that we have, all of the schools have a club or two running in them, which is another great thing, that all of our students have some opportunities to participate in these clubs and activities.
Okay. Okay, that's an update. We talk, we review all those items back in October. This is just sort of follow-up. This is how many that we actually had that were approved, so it's great to see.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item then, Dr. Bosman, do you have this item?
Yeah, so for this next one, it's the summer music program, like Dr. Rackley was talking about, an offering for ELD students. And last month, I was here talking about Falcon Summer Science Camp. This is another opportunity. This is our summer music program. So the first one is the Elementary Summer Band with Mr. Thompson. That's being held at South Lebanon Elementary School for five weeks from mid-June to mid-July, impacting 100 to 140 students. And then we have our Secondary Summer Band and Orchestra with Mr. Dalbert. That will be held at Cedar Crest Middle School. Once again, five weeks, similar mid-June to mid-July, impacting roughly 110 band students and roughly 80 orchestra students. So we're once again excited to have that offering and opportunity for our students.
That was Elementary Orchestra. But I was, I thought Mr. Bowles said it was...
I don't, I don't recall seeing that. I have to go back and look at it unless I...
Something, Summer Orchestra, Montgomery Mill and High School, for five weeks.
Montgomery Mill and High School. So that will be included then as part of the language in that proposal?
Okay. So, and then, so, right. So not all of the orchestras are Mr. Dowd, or is it also Mr. Bowles?
Yeah, so...
That's a heck of a load for one. Thank you.
Yeah, so my mistake on that one.
Well, good on that.
Yeah.
I'm glad there's a problem to jump in.
So we'll have, but they'll be on there. We'll just have elementary and secondary summer band and orchestra for next week, so... The, yeah, and I guess also, the location is different...
Yeah.
...as well for the elementary band. as well for the elementary band, because, you know, we're going to be using South Lebanon.
Yeah.
Probably going to have to do some things like that over the next couple of years, so. Okay, well, we'll just make sure we get that changed then, that it's. Okay. Use of facilities, I think, is the next one.
Can I quick ask a question? I do have a question. Is Quiz Bowl, are they a club? Is that a club? So, somebody brought to my attention, which I never noticed it, but, I mean, they have obviously won multiple championships, so congratulations to them for this year. But, one thing that was brought to my attention was that they're, how did we get the kids? Because somebody noticed that we always had guys. And so, I wanted to know, do kids pick to be on that team, or how do we get, how do we build that team?
Yeah, I mean, that's like most clubs, it would be elective to participate in, and then they'd go through some competitions to see who's, you know, who's going to be the most, has the most answers. That's how that would probably, the ability to respond.
So, they compete against each other to get?
I think they would probably have some internal ones to see who's going to be there first. I think that's how they do it.
Do they have a child?
Yeah, I think that's how, Mr.
They have a child?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I've seen.
Because I know sometimes he has a group that, you know, they've, and he tries to recruit the younger kids, the younger underclassmen as well, so that he can build that deck. You are right that it is, there are more males than females.
Since I've been here, I don't think I've ever seen a female, so that's why I was kind of, when she said it, I was like, wow, now thinking back, because they have come here lots of times, because they've won championships. And I don't think in six years I've seen a girl, so that was something that I thought, if we could, that would.
Yeah, I'd have to think back on that. I know that it would be, but like any club, it would be open to all students to participate.
And it's more like they volunteer to do it.
It's whether they, whether individuals choose to do it.
Maybe he can look for some girls too.
I'm sure, he may very well have been, I'm sure, you know, but it's a matter of.
Help me with that question.
We have her, yeah. Okay. Yeah, and he's done a very nice, Mr. Tom has done a very nice job with that over the years, he really has. But we've been, obviously, we've been pretty successful, so. Okay, Sunday use of facilities.
Okay, so here on the agenda, there's Cedar Crest High School Musical Organization, ratification. There was a date for a Sunday that was added on Sunday, March 2nd. Cedar High, Cedar Crest High School Planetarium, that's also ratification. That was, that's for coming up here on March 16th. Cedar Crest Girls Youth Lacrosse, ratification. They have several dates, of which Sunday, March 16th is the first of those dates. And then next is Cedar Crest Youth Boys Lacrosse, those dates are further in the future. So, we would be looking for board action to ratify or approve these Sunday use of facilities.
Then we have overnight field trips, we have a few here.
Yeah, so here for overnight field trips, all for Cedar Crest High School students. We have the first one to Northeast Middle School in Bethlehem, PA for State Chorus. Another one to Hershey Lodge for the 2025 Pennsylvania FBLA State Conference. Then to Penn State State College, 2025 Pennsylvania FFA Activities Week Conference and Competition. And then to Twin Grove Campground in Pine Grove, Pennsylvania, Varsity Cross Country Team Camp. So, we would be looking for board action to approve these overnight field trips.
Yeah, I don't think there's any surprises with those.
On, on the board docs, it has, for the FBLA, Cedar Crest High School student is only one person going? Or is it students for the FBLA to Hershey Lodge?
I would think it would be students.
I would think it would be also, I was just thought I would clarify, thank you.
Yeah, especially that it's in, that it's in Hershey, we'd take advantage of that. Okay, thank you. Okay, that was all the items that we have for extracurricular, I believe. Do we have any questions, any further questions about any of those items? Okay, what we are going to do at this time, so we're just going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll move into finance and business portion of our agenda. So, we'll just take that break right now, okay?
So the first item is our annual fuel bid process. We do use Keystone Purchasing Network and we have for the last several years. They are through the Central Susquehanna IU. And we do request quantities for heating oil. We do have one building that has heating oil. And then we also do diesel and gas for Brightville. Quantities were due February the 24th, so we did already submit those quantities. And then right now KPN's bid schedule has them awarding bids on May 1st. And then once they award, then we will then approve that. And that would be May 19th is when we have it scheduled for you to approve the awarded of those bids. There is nothing for next week for you to approve. This is just an update on the governor's proposal. Again, this is a proposal. He presented to the General Assembly on February the 4th. He has multiple themes for his budget presentation. And just, I just grabbed a few of them. Investing in children, students and educators, creating opportunities for our children and our students to succeed. Ensuring Pennsylvania has access to mental health resources. So those were three of the themes that I just caught my eye. For the basic education funding, which is a very large line item in their budget, in the state budget. He's looking at increasing it by 75 million. This is a smaller amount, probably the last 10 years. For special education funding, increase of 40 million. Again, this is a smaller than normal amount. But they do have in the budget a new adequacy investment. If you remember last year, we talked about that for this year. But there are also, he is also proposing an additional 526 million on top of what was provided this year. Again, this is a proposal for physical and mental health grant, looking at continuing the grants that Dr. Bosman talks about. And then also state reimbursement to continue universal free breakfast. On the next slide, and there's just a lot of information in his proposal, but I am picking out certain items that catch my eye that have to do with schools. Current tech, looking at increase of 5.5, investing more in the trades. School facility improvement, competitive grants, the key is competitive. So there's 500 schools throughout Pennsylvania and there's $125 million to propose in this. So it is very competitive. Pre-K counts, looking at increasing that by 17 million, early intervention increase. And then also he did put out there again, minimum wage 725 to 15 per hour. What's not in the budget is that Plan Con line item. They do have it in the budget, but that is right now paying loans back for those that they promised several years ago. So there hasn't been any new for a while, probably 10 years, at least 10 years. And then also there is no cyber charter reimbursement in this proposal either. Again, this is a proposal. They did have their hearings, so we'll see what the next steps are. Next slide, what does it mean for Cornwall Lebanon if this proposal went through and everybody agreed? Basic Ed would increase our basic Ed allotment for about 154,000. And Special Ed increased by a little less than 100,000. And then new adequacy investment of 1.9. We did receive 1.9 this year. And then they're looking at, he's looking at proposing another 1.9. I'm not sure how they're going to sustain this. I'm a little leery in including that in the budget at this point. And then the safety, security, mental health grant, the piece that's not competitive. And then of course, there's no savings for the cyber charter school tuition for us. Again, just caution, this is all proposal. It has to, a lot of people have to agree to this in order for it to happen. But that's what it looks like for us at this point.
So that's the proposal and I suspect that we will be in a similar situation as we are most years where we will be going forward with our budget and needing to pass our budget prior to knowing what the result of the state budget will be.
That is correct.
Mrs. Hensel just work with, you know, getting information what we can, making some educated guesses that we think are going to be as close as possible. And that's probably the best we'll be able to do with that. All right. Next item that we have up here, this is a, gets into some follow-up to what we talked about earlier.
Yeah, so we had a presentation earlier on the Nets bond issuance. Just want to, I'll probably repeat some of this of what Mr. Remick talked about. Existing debt right now and the maturity dates. Right now we're looking at the existing debts of 2017 bond, which was to fund Union Canal project. That will end in 26, 27. And then 2023 general obligation bond, that was for the Falcon Connector. 2024 was last year, that's to start the high school planning. And then of course, Mr. Remick talked about issuance of the next bond. Debt smoothing plan. So this is a long-term plan. You have to look at where we are right now and where we are peaking at with our payments. And those are things that you have to look at every year. And fortunately with PFM, they assist with making sure that we have steps on, such as the 2017 bond dropping off in 26, 27. And then looks at what bonds are coming in and kind of making that schedule. So we're slowly dropping off, but then picking up because there's always going to be a need for facility improvements. So right now, the plan that we have in place is to increase our budget, our general fund budget by 750,000 every year in order to meet the demand of this campus project. What does that mean? That means about a one point, one and a quarter percent tax increase every year. Just to be able to meet that demand in the coming years. And I have a little graph that hopefully will also help understand that a little better. What does that do when we're committed to that is it maintains a consistency from budget to budget. And it also allows those available funds for those planned projects, whether it's for the campus or even ones outside of the campus. So we know that one of our elementary schools are going to need facility improvements. We are working on some of that as Mr. Brookley talked about. But we also need to plan for the bigger projects to make sure that they are operating. So what is the next step? Like I mentioned earlier, 2025 general obligation bond is we're looking at getting that parameter resolution approved next week to give me flexibility to work with PFM to lock those rates in if, when they're good. So over the next month, we'll be, they'll be watching those closely for us and then contact me when they believe the right time is. So what do we need from you for next week is that the parameters resolution that Mr. Remick talked about is to get that approved and give us that flexibility. Mr. Murray, Dr. Murray, if you want to go to the next slide, this kind of gives you a visual of what my plan is. So the blue, and right now in 24, 25, the blue represents the payments, the bond payments. That is the demand right now of our general fund. And you're looking at 4.1 million. So 4.1 million dollars worth of bond payments are going out this year. In that gray portion is the, what we call positive variance. So as you're working your way up each year to try to meet the demand in the future, there's a positive variance there to put that in place. So that 2.3 in the gray is a positive variance. We take that and put that in assigned fund balance. So then as we're working along, you'll see in the middle of the screen, there is a negative variance. We'll take that money that we put to the side in this year and next year. And we'll pay, we'll pay for that amount that we have not met that payment demand yet. If that makes sense. So when we're all done with the campus, we'll have a peak of a little over 10 million dollars is where the payment, the bond payments are going to peak. And that's in the 20, 29, 30 year. So if we continue to put that 750,000 dollars away every year, like as a part of the general fund budget, we will meet that demand in 29, 30. We'll have just a little bit left over, 170,000. But then the next year then is we'll do it again. And that will start funding our next project, which would be probably Cornwall is my guess. But it could be Cornwall Ebenezer, depending on what that looks like. But that is how we try to keep things smooth and not have these significant increases. It just helps with projecting. It helps with just a budget to budget.
Yeah, I think absent Plan Con and the way this is, is it's just incumbent upon districts to have a long-term plan for what you're going to do with your facilities. And it can't be a three, four, five year. It has to be an ongoing when you're looking at multiple buildings.
And that Plan Con was huge, I mean, just this campus, my guess is we probably would have had 20 million from the state for Plan Con.
There are regulations regarding assigned fund balance.
Assigned fund balance?
Or unassigned, what are we?
Unassigned is, this is assigned.
This is assigned, so, and you guys all know that.
And the blue part is a part of our budget. That's not, that's not the assigned or unassigned fund balance. The gray is where you're talking about assigned fund balance. And again, we're going to need that, those pieces coming in 27, 28 and 28, 29 until that 750 helps us get to where we need to be. Sure, sure. I shared this kind of graph, I don't know if you remember, but six years ago, right before COVID. I shared a graph like this and when I saw what I did, I'm like, this would help explain how we're going to make this work.
Okay, so that's the debt service plan. That's finance and business items there. Do we have any questions about any of those items? Okay, thank you. We'll move on next to personnel. Dr. Bosman?
Okay. The first section here on the personnel listing to accept the following resignations and retirements. Jody Dresch, first grade instructor, Cornwall Elementary School, effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year due to retirement. Adam Leonard, art instructor, Cedar Crest High School, effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year due to retirement. Sarah Sueda Martinez, assistant middle school cross-country coach, 50% effective February 26, 2025 due to resignation. Andrew Seager, aquatic worker, effective February 17, 2025 due to resignation. Teresa Fidler, instructional assistant, special education life skills, 6.5 hours, Cedar Crest High School, effective February 24th due to resignation. Carl Hornickel, district custodian, Cedar Crest Middle School, effective March 3, 2025, due to resignation. Scott Bergman, building maintenance elementary, Cornwall Elementary School, effective October 15, 2025, due to retirement. Those designated on the listing with an asterisk will continue as a substitute with the district. Approve the following request for leave. Elise Nelligan, fourth grade instructor, Union Canal Elementary School, for childbearing leave, effective approximately July 24, 2025. Approve the following change in employment status. Blair Fisher from part-time, 50% to full-time, assistant middle school cross-country coach at a salary of $3,147, effective with the 2025-2026 school year. Approve, ratify the employment of the following personnel, effective with the 2024-2025 school year, pending completion of pre-employment materials. Jeremy Mace, assistant softball coach at a salary of $3,853. Sharon Correa Reyes, personal care assistant, autistic support, 6.5 hours, Ebenezer Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $17.22. Gene Wangert, food service helper, 4.5 hours, Cedar Crest Middle School, at an hourly wage of $16. Approve, ratify the employment of the following personnel, effective with the 2025-2026 school year, pending completion of pre-employment materials. Erin Fife, third grade instructor, Union Canal Elementary School, at a salary of $66,880. The next volunteer coaches, John Tintera, boys lacrosse, Michael Gabel, football, Jenna Wogelmuth, boys volleyball, and Tyler Schaefer, boys volleyball. So that concludes the personnel items for next week.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bosman. Any questions about any of the personnel items? Okay. We'll move on to policy and management. And I believe the first item we have up there is the school calendar. We do need to approve our school calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. A lot of similarities with this calendar to this year. We would meet, our school would be in session then, the first day for all students on the Monday before Labor Day, as we have traditionally done. And we would continue with many of those days in the fall with some professional learning. Labor Day, of course, the Friday before Labor Day is a professional learning day. Columbus Day is professional learning day. We have days at the end of the marking period that would be in there as well. One difference is that after, or during Thanksgiving break is that school would be in session on the Monday following Thanksgiving break. That's consistent with most other districts now. And then of course, the change in hunting regulations too. So that's a, there are some changes there. And looking at that, just the length of our break there for our elementary and middle school students, that with parent teacher conferences, they're out quite a long time. And then of course, you turn around and they have the break just a month later. So, you know, maximizing that day there makes a lot of sense. When we get up to the Christmas and holiday break, we'd be looking at, school would be in session on the Monday and Tuesday of that week because of the way the calendar falls this year. We would be out from that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the following week. And then at the end of the year, we would end on June 5th, around the Easter spring break holiday. We do have with some of the makeup days, it's slightly different. And that's because of, we don't have another makeup day in there. We would still be at four. But what we're trying to do is to end this year on June 5th because of the construction that we're going to need. Just having that extra week, being able to have a clean week there so that we can start, we can get contractors in here and work on a high school. The more that we can, every little bit we can do that. The more that we can, every little bit we can do that can accelerate and make sure that stays on schedule. Some districts have altered some of their time, their calendars and things like that. Since this is ongoing, that really doesn't do anything because we'd just be pushing it into the next year. So it makes sense for us to try to maximize the summer as much as we can. Are there any questions about the calendar? Okay. Again, we try to get some continuity with our neighbors too. So sometimes the makeup days, the holidays where we have days, that's, we try to do that as best because of the shared programs at the CTC, all of our special education shared programs with the IU as well as within the consortium. The more we can do that, it does help out. Though it's not perfect, but we try to find as many where we can, so. This will be on for approval next Monday. The calendar will be on for approval then. Okay. Revised policies for final adoption. These were discussed last month. Reviewed were 118 and 123. And then extracurricular activity positions. There was a minor change to that, I believe, Dr. Bosman. Is that right? Okay. Policies to be placed on the table. 228 is just a review. The care of school property. Again, some of these, these are very minor changes. This is just about reporting to the board on occurrences of incidences of vandalism. If there's major incidences, which we would do anyways, if there was a major incidence of vandalism. Probably not going to tell you if we had a, any kind of minor thing in the bathroom. You know, it's going to be handled, be dealt with. The principals will take care of it. But if there was a major issue, of course, we would notify you. And then under threat assessment, this is codifying what we already do, which is having our threat assessment team for the district and identifying how that team is made up. This is part of the school code. So we've been doing this for some time now. We're just updating our policies to make sure they're current with what requirements are and what our current practices. So some minor changes there. And that is all that we have for policy and management. Do we have any questions about any of those items? Thank you. The next one's really quick. People's services and food services, we do not have any items for this month. So we'll move on. We're good there. Technology and transportation.
Okay, so for transportation, we have the, we'll be requesting approval of two drivers for Brightville Transportation, both CDL trainees. That would be Shirley Deven and Stephen Epstein, as listed.
Okay. And I believe that concludes all of our items to present to the board, school directors. Do we have questions about any of the items that we have presented or discussed this evening? Do we have questions from anyone in attendance about any of the items that we presented or discussed this evening? Okay. Thank you. That concludes our items. Mrs. Schlegel?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Demensik, and thank you all for your thorough reports. We do appreciate it. I will announce at this time that we will have an executive session for the purpose of a legal matter. So at this time, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
A second, a motion and a second to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.